Shabbat, I know we only have so much time right now. May our Shabbat be time together to feel our souls, our own souls, and to be together with the souls of our community. So that we, each week as we come together, keep our people alive and re-soul ourselves. Say Shabbat shalom. Thank you for learning with me, letting me be here this Shabbat, and may we all re-soul one another. Shabbat shalom.
...blessing, and I'll have it there in three minutes. All right. Chavei rei nabarech. Yehi shamanai marak mitavellam be shul chavei rei nabarech. Elohim shalchan be shalom. Baruch elohim shalchan be shalom. Tuvah ha'chayinu baruch ha'varuch shmo. Baruch atah Adonai. Elohimu melach ha'olam. Zanet ha'olam kulloh betuvah. Be'chain be'chaseru brachamim. Hu nouten le'chem lechol basar. Ki le'holam hastom. U'chubah ha'gadom. Tamid lo hasar lano. Ve'ayasar lano. Ma hazon le'holam va'ed. Vur shemo ha'gadom. Ki uzanu parnez la'ho. Ha'kolo mechin ma hazon. Reotav ha'sheher barah. If you want to continue silently, whether you can, Patty, the meeting back in the sanctuary? Okay. Thank you.
But it's okay, it's not. So let's move this. And put it where?
Put it right where the chair is.
Okay.
And we can move the chair to the side.
Thank you. No problem. I can adjust this. Oh, thank you. No problem. And we should have the table for your writing and stuff. Thank you. Whoops. Okay. Okay, great. That's... That's good.
Wait a second. I want to get rid of that chair.
Okay, great, great. All right. So I will, as best we can, I would hope that this learning, we can do a little bit... Masks off. Ah, yes, you're all away from me. And I can...
You can down a little bit.
Okay. All right, well, Shabbat shalom. Thank you, Adrian, for making sure I can come across as clearly as possible. Happy to be here for those... I think I've met everybody in the room, at least maybe back. Hello, shalom. It's hard to tell. And of course, joining on the livestream, Shabbat shalom. Good morning. I... or afternoon. I'm Rabbi Jenny Greenspan. And today, I'm going to do a teaching. I know it's a little bit harder to do interactive, especially unfortunately for those at home, you can't fully interact. But I hope you can follow and listen. And for those at home, I'll repeat any comments I get from the room. And if you are in the room, attempt to help for me, and I'll repeat so that everyone can hear. So we'll do as interactively as we're able, knowing our masking needs. So we'll start with my opening question. What is the first word you usually say in the morning? You can think about the moment your alarm goes off. What's the first word you often usually say? You guys are ahead of me on this one. No, no, but really, what's the first word for some of us? Yeah. Good morning. Sometimes it's a good morning. Maybe it's an "I love you" to your partner. Maybe it's a word you don't want to say in the sanctuary to your alarm clock, maybe. But as Ben and Steve are jumping ahead on me here, modeh is traditionally, in Jewish tradition, the first word of the day that we should say. There's a few short source sheets in the room. We can now pass them out because you all jumped on me on that. I didn't want to give it away to you. And if you are joining on the livestream, I believe there's an opportunity to find that, the source sheet, if you want to follow along with us in the texts. So that you can also be with me from the website. I'm not sure. It's either, it should be either in your aliyah email, weekly email, or on the information where you have my schedule for the weekend. You'll see the source sheet. It should be titled, "Grateful Am I." A couple said, "Modeh is the first word of the day that you say, or traditionally, the first word that we as Jews should say." Now note, as we go, we're going to go through that first line. Modeh ani le'panecha, melach chay ve'kayam. She'achizarta bi nishmati be'chemla. Raba imunetecha. Let's go through that slowly. You have the English in front of you on the sheet. Grateful am I before you, living and everlasting ruler, for you have restored my soul within me with mercy. Great is your faithfulness. I want to point out a couple of things about this opening prayer. One, we start each day traditionally, not with the word "I", not even "I love you" to our partner, or "I am thankful to you, God", because ani modeh, ani modah would work grammatically in Hebrew. But it is instead, grateful am I, modeh or modah ani. Gratitude is the first word we should say each morning. So I want to sit and think a little about gratitude this afternoon. Each morning, we say, "Grateful am I before you, living and everlasting ruler, who has restored my soul." Traditionally, it was believed that our souls kind of went up to God while we were asleep, went up to the heavens while we were asleep, and brought back to us when we awake. Couldn't... Our soul would go up and kind of get a cleaning, so get washed, get washed and get ready for the new day. There's some traditions that teach that when God was holding on to our soul overnight, that was... Take a moment to look at what's a little bit interesting about that particular word, that particular phrasing. It's not great is our faith in God. It's great is your, God, faithfulness in me. So when, God, we say each morning, "Grateful. Going to start my day from a point of gratitude. Am I before God, who has taken a look at my deeds of the last day, cleaned off my soul, restored it to me with mercy, and given it back to me with God's faith in me, that today I will do better? I trust that I will be better today than I was yesterday?" I want to hold that prayer as we go into the next two texts on here with context, as our context. Mindful that I want to keep us with enough time for both pieces today. So let's take a look at our next text, and then I'll ask for a little more interaction here. So this comes from Va'ikra Raba, a Midrashic text on the book of Va'ikra, the book of Leviticus, which dives into a lot of the sacrifices and a lot of the Kohens role that sort of we got started a little bit in the last couple of days, or the last couple of weeks. So Rabbi Pinchas, excuse me, and Rabbi Levy, and Rabbi Yochanan said in the name of Rabbi Menachem of Galilee, "In the world to come, all of the sacrifices will be nullified, but that of Thanksgiving will not be nullified." Meaning, all of the sacrifices will no longer be necessary, except for those of Thanksgiving. "All of the prayers will be nullified, but the prayers of Thanksgiving will not be." So in the world to come, everything else except for sacrifices and prayers of Thanksgiving will be deemed unnecessary. But gratitude, Thanksgiving still will be. So I want to take a moment and take any reactions to that. Why we think that gratitude is still so necessary in the world to come? Or questions about the text? That's also... Or any questions about the text? Also, kosher response here. Yeah, please, Patty.
I guess that perhaps it's the underlining thing of gratitude, that even in the world to come, we should still be grateful for being there and for giving us the opportunity to be there.
So even in the world to come, we need to remember to be grateful for that we have the opportunity to be in the world to come. That be grateful to God for having put us there. Yeah. Any other thoughts? Yeah, Andy, right? Andy? So Andy points out that a lot of the other prayers are about getting us to the world to come. We're hoping for the world to come. If we're in the world to come, we don't need to pray to get to the world to come. But we have to remember to be grateful for it. And I think you're both picking up on that key piece, that we have to be grateful for it. We have to remember to be grateful for it. Because what can gratitude do for us if we don't have it? Don't remember to be grateful? It means that we start to get complacent. We start to... Yes, Steve. We start to take things for granted. Can you imagine a world to come that we've been waiting for, we've been praying for, we continue, currently we pray for? A world to come where God has provided for all of our needs. There are no needy, there are no hungry. Everyone has everything that they need. And then we suddenly started taking it for granted. Would it be the world to come anymore? Yes, please, Lisa, right?
It's more entable. You know, lack of gratitude can develop into an entitled attitude, which is the opposite of the mirror. You know, and that's, you know, that's in yours.
We live in the world to come. We're supposed to get everything that the world to come comes with. And we stop to, stop thinking about others. We stop thinking about God. We stop thinking about how we had it, have it, and instead just think about ourselves. We get self-centered. We get entitled and self-centered. Ben? Oh, we're going to do a microphone. That's helpful. Okay. That's why I'm trying to repeat, but that's fine.
I have a question about being, having the gratitude.
Yeah.
Are we going to have it before it comes or after the world has come?
Are we going to have the gratitude before the world to comes or after? I think that this is saying that it endures. So Ben asked, are we having the gratitude before we get into the world to come or after we're in the world to come? I think this is saying that we already have prayers and sacrifices of Thanksgiving. We don't have sacrifices at all in our modern context, but we do have prayers of Thanksgiving. And in the world to come, we will still have those. Those will still be prayers that we need to do. And it's one of my... I spend the most time on. Comes from the Talmud. It's probably one of my favorite passages of Talmud. I have lots of favorite passages of Talmud, but this one's definitely in my top five list. From the Mesechet Brachot, to the section of Talmud discussing prayer, in which Benzoma would say, "A good guest..." What does a good guest at the table say? "How much effort did the host expend on my behalf?" I want us to hold those two guests. One who says, "Look at all that was done for me", and one that says, "Eh, eh, it wasn't for me. It was for the friends and family." I think these two guests are at the same table. And are a little... How do you feel if you're the host? How do you feel if you're the host of these two guys? Yeah, Lisa? "You know who you're going to invite back next time," says Lisa, right? "You know who's going to come back again. You know who you're going to have over again." Which means, what is... He wants that appreciation as the host. And these two guests sitting at this table are affecting the host back by whether or not they show gratitude. Gratitude creates community. Gratitude allows us to interact with one another. And I think, I think that this particular passage, part of what I love about it, is that I think of it as a parable for this world. I don't think the host is me when I have you over for Shabbat dinner. And I don't think the table is my Shabbat table. I think the host is God, and that the table is this world. And right here, we're being taught, what does a good guest say when we walk out into the world? "Look at this world. Look at all that God created for me. Look at these trees here to give me shade. Look at this shelter here to give me space. Look at these people around me here to give me community." We could also walk through the world and say, "Eh. God made the trees for..." Well, that's not for me. That's for everybody. This building, it's for whoever. These other people, they're just there. I think that this text is asking us to walk through the world as though God is the host, and we should walk through it with an attitude of gratitude, but really a practice of gratitude. I have a couple of concluding thoughts in a few minutes, but I know we have a couple of minutes. And I would love to hear any thoughts or reactions. I was hoping to do some interactive learning with us. So any thoughts, reactions, pushbacks? Maybe these two guests are not at the same table. Yes, Lisa and Andy. Okay. Okay, so we're going to bring a microphone. I don't mind repeating. Okay, okay. That's okay. Okay. So for comments, come on up to this microphone. So make sure that the livestream doesn't hear my summary of you, but hears you in full. Perfect.
When you're reading this in the first guest, the grateful guest, it says, "God does this for me when you do this", it also goes to a broader community. Because say, instead of being, "God does this for me", you're doing this for all of mankind. "God does this for all of mankind", and that brings a sense of community. Whereas the second guest says, "Doesn't do it for me", then it's a separation, because then it's looking... That's truly the "I", as opposed to when... So I would look at the paragraph. When it says "me", it doesn't mean just me. It's my family, it's my community, it's my world, all people. And if you look at it broader than that, it's a concept of bringing community together through gratitude.
Right. So the first guest says "me", but if we're the guests at God's table, the first guest means us. And the second guest really just means "me", and removes themselves from the "us". Lisa, you're reminding me of the bad son, the wicked son in the Passover Haggadah. The one who says, like, "Why did God do all this for..." And the, you know, "Why this? Who cares? What's all this for? I don't care." And the parent is supposed to respond with, "God wouldn't have done it for you." If you're going to remove yourself from the community, then you're removing yourself from the community. You're reminding me of that, that the gratitude, if we look at the world with a grateful eye, we remember that we're a part of an "us", that we're a part of a community, that we're part of a species, we're part of human beings. Andy, I saw that you had a hand. I don't... Is that one on now? Okay. Yes.
Really just, I like that this is your top five Talmud quotes. Because it's actually my top five quotes of my own that are actually in my monitor at work. One of them is, I feel like it was Einstein, but I feel like every quote was given to either Einstein or Yogi Berra. So I'm not sure if he actually said this. Which was that, you know, there's two ways to look at the world. One is which, nothing is a miracle, and as others, everything is a miracle. Which I've heard forever, but it's really just an extension of this.
Right.
The first one looks at everything as a gift, and the second one doesn't.
Right. The first looks at everything as a miracle, and the quote ascribed to Einstein, but who knows? And the second looks as if nothing is a miracle. Goes through the world looking as though everything is a miracle. Everything is a gift. Everything is an opportunity from God. I think that we live in a world where people, more often than not, tend toward that bit where they don't expect gratitude to endure even into the world to come. They don't expect us to continue to be grateful when we walk through the world with a certain entitlement and a thought about ourselves. And the best way to move out of that is to develop that practice of gratitude, to put ourselves in the "us", to look at everything as a miracle, to look at the table and say, "Wow. Look at all this effort that someone put in for just little old me." So one of the things I would like to offer, one, gratitude is a core value of our tradition. We're to open each and every day with the word "grateful". Need to work at, and something that we need to do. So I want to take a moment, if any of you already have, a gratitude practice. I have a few to share and to suggest to close us out. But I wonder if anyone has any that they feel comfortable sharing with the community? A practice of gratitude that you might already have? If not, I'll offer a few that we can all take on. So one, it sounds like at least some of you may already have, the first word of your day is "modeh", is starting our day with "modeh ani le'panecha", "modah ani le'panecha". And I'll admit, I do not remember it to say. It's my first word of the day. It's usually something I kind of think of later on. But whenever you think of it, say it. And maybe you say it in the Hebrew. You say that exact formula. "Modeh ani le'panecha, modah ani le'panecha, melach chay ve'kayam she'achizarta bi nishmati be'chemla, raba imunetecha." Maybe you just say it in English or in the words of your own heart. You just, at some point in the morning, when you first remember, "Wow, I'm alive this morning." My vogel this morning said, "In Elohim shema", we take the breath. Wow, I have that breath back. When you think of it, say it. Offer your gratitude to God. Internalize that gratitude to the peace of sanctity, the peace of divinity within yourself. Which leads to the next practice of gratitude, is to articulate for what you are grateful in your life, whether it's verbally, mental notes, written. Many have a practice of a gratitude journal. I'll admit, my practice of that specifically has come and gone. It's a way to articulate. Take a moment, big or small, to see what the host, what effort the host has expended for you. What are you grateful for in your world? Take a moment to say, "I am grateful to live in a world with chocolate chip cookies." Or, "I am grateful to my colleagues, who've been very flexible with me as I go on this journey. I'm grateful to a community that's welcomed me in and back, and given me space to be here and share teaching with you." Whatever the gratitude might be, to articulate it for yourself, and then make time to review it, to remember it, to make it real. Could be a nightly ritual, reading through, especially if you do a journal, a nightly or a morning ritual to read through it. Or I will do often in my Shabbat amida, I try to think back over my week and say, "What in my week could I not have done without the help of someone outside of me, whether that was God or another human being?" And take that moment to put myself second. "Modah ani", put myself second, and articulate it. And when, my final practice to offer, is when you recognize that that gratitude needs to be articulated to another human being, and realizing that I am grateful for the people who've invited me here, my colleagues who've allowed me the flexibility, to turn, in turn, say it to them. Be the good guest who says it to the host. If you're going to be the... If you have moments, we all have moments of being the bad guest, don't say it to your host. But if you're going to be the good guest, say so. Say thank you. Call them up. Send a thank you note. Sometimes the smallest thank you note for something you may never have thought of can mean the world. And so we, with those practices, reminding ourselves on a spiritual prayer level, articulating to ourselves for what those things that we are grateful for, and then making the effort to be the good guest and to say thank you to those who have brought us the reasons for gratitude. We should build those into our practice as well. Call and send a note. And so I'll conclude, because I think we're at about that time? We're at about that time? I'll conclude this with articulating just that. Say a deep and genuine thank you to all of you for being here with me and learning with me, all of you at home, learning with me and following with me. I am so grateful for this opportunity to take a little bit of time standing on this bima and learning with you and being here with you. Thank you. And thanks to all who are... Thank you to Adrian for making sure that everybody could hear everything. I do want to say thank you for that. And thank you to Patty for organizing so much. And thanks to everybody for being here. Thank you. Shabbat shalom.
Thank you, Rabbi Greenspan. I think we'll start our Q and A now.
Okay. Yeah? And so I'm, you know, the, this microphone, the livestream, should be able to hear folks' questions. Okay, so I don't have to fully... Great. That's... Yeah, sometimes it's difficult to be able to repeat everything that's said, so that's helpful. Right. Yeah, of course. Okay. Okay.
I have a few questions to ask, Rabbi, but I was wondering, I think I'll ask a couple of questions, and then we can ask people to come up.
Okay.
Can you please describe what being a conservative Jew means to you?
What a conservative Jew means to me? I think, so a conservative Jew to me is someone who's, whose life is built around the Jewish tradition in some way. That halacha plays some role in our lives, that we think about the rhythm of Jewish life. Perhaps not everything, but we are truly a part of the tradition, holding on to pieces of tradition, truly conserving Judaism as it's been passed down to us. And that... And at the same time, allowing that tradition opportunity to breathe. Opportunity to shift and to change over time a little bit, to be a part of a community. That quote I shared before, in the livestream, you might have heard it, when I was talking about Shabbat in next week's Torah portion, that more than the Jewish people keep Shabbat, Shabbat keeps the Jewish people. To me, a conservative Jew is a part of that system, of keeping one another together, and holding on to tradition in the ways that we'll hold on to bringing people in, and allowing for the movement and the development. I believe that the Talmud, the first attempts at our legal system, has lots of ideas and involvement in there because there's an acknowledgement that time will change and life will change. And so, to me, a conservative Jew has a practice that's built in some way around some Judaism. Maybe it's An-Shabbat, maybe it's around what they eat, whatever speaks most. And as a part of a community that holds on to those traditions and allows for some shifts in breath.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Bob?
Thanks. I'm interested to know what your thoughts are about the effect of the potential sale of the Bel Air property by the AJU.
That's not fair. My thoughts on the sale and the potential?
The potential sale and the effect that it'll have on the Jewish community here, as well as rabbis here?
So I will own that, though I'm an alumna of the AJU and the Ziegler School. I don't know much more about the sale than anyone else at the moment does outside of the board of that, who've made that decision. But I trust them in their attempts to understand that the financial, that the endowment possibilities should increase opportunities for Jewish learning. I have my worries about what it will mean for class spaces and for the library and the mikvah and things housed there. And I also trust that the board members and the faculty of the campus who've made the decision are not the only one, that I'm not the first to have thought of those sorts of things and have plans for that. I think the long-term effect on the community will be that they're able to offer, I've participated from Indianapolis in some of the digital offerings that the AJU has put out since COVID began. And I look forward to what more they can do with those for the, not only the Los Angeles Jewish community, but the wider Jewish community as a whole. And I really look forward to see what they can do with that influx of funds to really expand that program. And I will, for now, be cautiously optimistic in that they have thought through what all of the building needs might actually be, and have spaces for the students.
Andy?
I have a nostalgic factor, but.
Thanks for being here. It's great. So last year, at the most recent flare-up of conflict in Israel, there was a letter that was written and signed by almost 100 rabbinic students, which I'm sure you're very aware of. And I know you were out of rabbinical school by then, but close enough that I imagine you know many of them, and you're certainly close to their generation of the rabbin. So I'm just curious what you think that letter and the number of people who signed it says about the current young, the new generation of rabbis, their sense of the American Jewish rabbin, its connection and obligations to Israel, and what you think, how Israel plays a part in your own rabbin.
I think that young rabbis are constantly on the, we're constantly looking to, what is Israel's role in the Middle East, and how is it working with other surrounding areas? I don't think I'd have signed that letter had I been a student at the time, because I think we frequently jump to criticism. And I think that there's a balance between love that has room for criticism and room for ask for growth, and room to ask for the, there's a concept of Yerushalayim, Shal-malah, and Lamata, the Jerusalem, the heavenly Jerusalem, the above Jerusalem, and the Yerushalayim, Shal-malah, and Lamata, the lower Jerusalem, which is really the lived Jerusalem, and by extension, all of Israel. I don't think that those match. I think that my role as an American rabbi is to offer the opportunity to say how I think those need to match. For example, I think Israel has a long way to go on Jewish pluralism. Part of my year living there, as a rabbinical student, I noted very quickly how easy it was in an American Jewish space to be, to find and pray in an egalitarian space, and that that wasn't the case there. And I think that it is part of my role as an American rabbi to say that there is room for growth. And when it comes to the conflicts with the neighbors, I think that most people are woefully under-informed and jump to conclusions that are unfair. I disagree with anyone who would suggest that there's an apartheid situation. I don't think that that's what's happening. And so I don't think I'd have signed that letter. And I don't think that Israel, as it stands right now, is done. I think it's an ongoing experiment of the Jewish people, and we have work yet to be done to be as fair and to be an orlegoyim, to be alight to the nations as we possibly can be. And then my role would be to correct misinformation as it comes up, and to say when I feel that we have need for growth, which I know that the Rabbinical Assembly has gone to try to help boost majority spaces in Israel as well. There's a lot going on in Israel. I will say, I think that the best book I've come across, sometimes written extremely casually, but a beautiful book for approaching and understanding the background for a lot of, especially for younger people who don't really understand all of the background of the conflict between the Palestinian and the Arab and the Israeli, and all of the different moving parts there, was written by Noah Tishby, an actress who spends part of her time, is from Tel Aviv, spends a pretty even amount of time here in Los Angeles and in Tel Aviv. And so she wrote a very clear guide and background, pointing to how some of the conflicts, we'll go back to Lawrence of Arabia and earlier, that I think is really approachable and is a really helpful book to give, especially to high school students and to college students who are hearing a lot of the misinformation. So it's Noah Tishby's "Israel: A Guide to the Most Misunderstood Country on Earth," I think is the full title. And I think part of my role as Rabbi is to make those sorts of resources accessible, and to teach both sides of the story as well, because I'll agree with.
But there are really appeal to you that you would be excited about bringing here to Aliyah.
So programs that I've fallen in love with. Any particular?
Pick the topic or pick the focus.
Great. So one of my favorites that I've developed for, intended for, initially for the young adults at my current congregation, but I, the more I think about it, the more it goes to really a much broader range. I called the program "Jewish Adulting," because I actually didn't want it to be a particular, I didn't want to like mark it has to be, you have to be this old to participate, and you can't participate if you're over this age. I just kind of wanted to, I figured in the title "Adulting," there'd be some self-selection. There's only a certain demographic that uses the word "adult" as a verb. So that was where that one was intended for. And that particular program, the idea was to do hands-on learning. I learned from some of my younger congregants, my congregants in their twenties and a few in their thirties, that, yeah, they learned in Hebrew school. Some of them didn't go to Hebrew school. And most of them didn't really remember what they should have learned in Hebrew school, and wanted opportunity to engage with one another and to learn Judaism. Prior to that, we had a Torah Untapped program that was a, "Come and do a little Torah learning, and we'll buy a beer." They saw through the bribe, and they asked for a hands-on activity instead. And so I created this Jewish Adulting series, which unfortunately, COVID sort of meant that I only got to do a couple of rounds, but I want to really develop it and keep it going. One of them was challah baking. We learned, Brad, my husband, is the master challah baker in my home. I'm adequate at best. But he helped me make enough dough for everybody who had RSVP'd. And we had everybody come over. Everyone got a loaf's worth of dough in front of them. We taught them how to braid, that part I could do. We taught them how to braid the challahs, and then we set those to rise. And I did a little bit of teaching on Shabbat. Like, what is the beauty of Shabbat? What can we offer on Shabbat? I made a point that that not be the, "Okay, you want to keep Shabbat? Here's 39 things you're not allowed to do. And by the way, these 39 things have like 17 others attached to each of them." No, we instead just said, we talked about blessings, blessing the people we're with, being grateful for the people we're with, taking the time to set our phones aside. We talked about the positives of Shabbat while the challahs were rising. When the challahs were done rising, we went back into the kitchen, we egg washed them, we gave a few options of, you know, poppy seed, everything but the bagels, spices, sesame seeds, whatever you want. Put them, put on, put those challahs in the oven, and we'd pre-measured the ingredients, taught everyone to make new dough. And so for the rest of that Thursday night, everybody had a challah that they could pull out of the oven and munch on while they were talking to their friends and meeting new friends. And they had a bag of dough to take home, to put in their refrigerator, to take out the next morning, to let it rise, and braid, and make Shabbat that night. I also sent them home with a booklet of the blessings, it was a part of the source sheet on Shabbat. So that was one that I was really excited, would love to bring. I did it then as a Jewish Adulting for young adults, but I can see it being not just young adults, especially it could be easily young parents, young couples who were trying to figure out how to build a Jewish home, how to partner with their, for parents especially, how to partner with the synagogue in instilling a Jewish identity for their child. Another one that we did in the Jewish Adulting series was a painting one, so it was very much change it up. We did baking, we did painting. We were going to do a kind of a workout one. We were gonna potentially get outside and do archery or something like that, and like, and just tying in Jewish texts and bringing in, in a non-judgmental way, some learning that people either didn't get or didn't remember from their religious school days. Reality is, not every adult who comes to a synagogue went to Hebrew school. Either you were raised without it, or you were not Jewish, or you just didn't go. Or you did go, and you don't remember it, because it wasn't your favorite. That happens too. That's one I'm excited about. I should let Patty pull one. I know names, so I'm calling people. Sorry.
I'm interested to know your thoughts on rabbis specifically and clergy in general engaging in political speak from the bima.
So my thoughts on political speech, Bob's coming with the hard questions here. My thoughts on political speech is that I don't think a rabbi should be talking specific politics. And we're now in a world where it's almost impossible not to say something, then someone will interpret as political. So I do my best not to focus on politics themselves, but to focus on values and the values that I see in the Torah, and to sharing the values that our Torah and our tradition teaches. And if some end up hearing those as political, then I'd want to have the discussion about why, and then maybe take some time to sit with the text a little bit, to come back to the value. I'm not someone who will ever come up and say, "We need to do this in this particular political sphere. We need to act on this particular measure," or "We need to ally ourselves with a particular politician." Except for that, not being legal as a role of a clergy person, it's just not my personality to do that. My eye is toward values, and I do my best to stay there. And I also know that that's getting harder and harder in the reality of the world. So I may sometimes say something that someone would interpret as political, but I don't intend it that way.
David?
One of the things that we've learned.
Can log on to a community anywhere.
Right, correct.
So a real question that every congregation is sitting with, congregation I'm serving right now included. I think that the reality is, for Friday nights, we have to do, for Shabbats in general, for Friday night and for Saturday morning, we do our best to offer what's authentic to this community, knowing that, especially in this area, there are other options of congregations to be a part of. It's not so in Indianapolis, I've learned by being there. It's a little less easy to, to remind people why they chose this community to be a part of before the pandemic, to make sure that what's being offered on the livestream is as authentic to the community as possible, which I think, from what I've seen in the last couple of days, has been done. And to continue to offer the Zoom programmings throughout the week, the classes that allow people to see one another and to see the faces that they know, and to allow the opportunities for interacting, to encourage during the Zoom programs that cameras be on and that people be seen by one another. And as it becomes safer and safer, to encourage on the livestream and in the emails, that, "We're here. There are spaces, there are seats here," and that we'd love to have you in them. That, I can feel in my heart that someone's there on the other side of the livestream. I can feel it, I know it. And it's not the same as feeling you here and seeing you here. Feeling and seeing, when it comes to human presence, are different. And it's important to reiterate that and to invite people back. Perhaps it's offering roles, perhaps it's just being as authentic as we can be to who we are.
Sam?
Hi, Rabbi Jenny. So truthfully, I'm a bit apprehensive about the Jewish conservative movement, especially with people in my generation, twenties and thirties. I think a lot of us see it as a burden to come to shul and merely want the, we keep that spiritual side, but don't really want to connect in other ways. What?
Especially in a community with as many people and resources that we can pull in and pull on to do other things. So I think some of it is including programming and learning, like the Adulting program that I mentioned. I think sometimes it's allowing, maybe opening a space to have a religious service, perhaps on a Shabbat, perhaps not, for that group together, that's self-created and feels like you're a part of creating it. I think that a lot of people in the millennial and the Gen X, or Gen Z generations, we really want to do our, like, we want to create it. We want to feel involved in it. And so there's a need to, maybe sometimes the services need to be self-created too, that we kind of have an opportunity for that. As far as I think will work and won't work, I think what does work is hands-on and involvement, and is giving somebody a role and reaching out to a friend and saying, "I think you'd be good at this. You want to come in and do this? And I think you'd enjoy this. Can you come with this to me? Come with me to this." I think what doesn't work is pretending that I know how to use TikTok. Like, my people told me it was a bribe. They saw through it. They worded it as the bribe of, "Come learn with the rabbi, she'll buy you a beer." Like, they saw through that. They were like, "That's a bribe. We don't want that." I think they want the, I think people want, I know what I would want as a millennial myself. I want to be involved in making it, and I want to be involved in the decision-making process and the ideas. What do we want to do? And involved in making it happen.
Any other questions?
Did you have more?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm sure you have more too.
How do you see yourself creating a spirit of inclusion in our community?
I think that inclusion needs to be subtle. Because I think that inclusiveness with feeling exceptional doesn't, isn't actually inclusive. I think that my role in making sure that things are inclusive are things like making sure that something that everybody might want might be available. Maybe that's a transliterated option to follow along in a seidur with. Maybe it's a seidur with, we already have Lev Shalim here, so it's less of a problem. But a seidur that tells you what's going on in the service, gives you something else to think about. Maybe it's an outline to the service, something that somebody from any education level would feel like they have a way to kind of figure out how to navigate the service, is one way. Thinking about our language, I try very hard to define my Hebrew language. I have a friend whose partner isn't Jewish, and when they were first dating, if I used too many Hebrew terms without translating, because I was, you know, first or second year rabbinical student, I would be told, "He doesn't know what you said." And that was a real lesson in inclusion to me, to say, the Talmud, an early collection of our rabbinic work that informed much of the early pieces of our tradition. Adding those things, thinking through those pieces of language, thinking about our language when it comes to gender diversity and sexuality diversity, thinking about our language when it comes to diversity of ability, thinking about our language when it comes to diversity of color, of age, really making sure that our language is as clear and open as possible, and as many access, making sure that there are opportunities for access. I'm really excited that right now the RA is working on a Braille edition of the Lev Shalim Seidur, and that would be something I'd want us to have and to make available, because that's another, I think overall, inclusion are the things that, if you don't need them, you don't need to see them. But if you need them and you find them, you feel like you're included.
Is there a specific contribution you can see yourself making to our community?
Specific contribution? I think, one I would love to like build on that. I think, one, I would love to like build on that adulting program, really bringing in programs for families, especially the younger kids. I think that it's really important for parents to partner with the congregation in instilling Jewish identity in their children. I think there's been a long time where parents felt like drop your kid off at religious school, pick them up and the congregation is taking care of the Jewish identity piece. And I think that parents now are starting to feel that lack and feel like they don't know how to help. And I think one of the biggest things I'd like to, to help contribute to and to work with, with a clergy team and a lay team on is creating family programming for families that want to learn more and to help those families partner with the congregation so that the congregation can be a center for learning and a center for prayer without being the bar mitzvah mill, which I don't think is true here, but I want to make sure that it's available for families to feel like they are partners with their kids.
So along those lines, how do you see yourself engaging the post-benimitzvah families?
So part of it is, is making sure we have those programs before the bar mitzvah, so the family feels comfortable being here afterward. I think part of it is that and part of it is the same kinds of things done with the younger adults. It's true for young teens and, and older teens as well. What do you want to do? In partnering with them and getting them to do some of the outreach and having them build. I love that the US wires build their own lounge nights. Like the, the programs that they do, they, they, they plan because they know what they want to do. And I think helping expand what they can do, maybe infusing a little bit of text with them, infusing a little bit of Jewish learning with them and adding to that, making, maybe not family program, teens don't always want to spend time with their parents, but making the, the kind of learning activities. We do a challah bake with the teenagers too. Just creating those opportunities for them to engage around a, an activity, a Jewish subject. And I think involving the whole family, making the whole family feel comfortable being a part of the synagogue will extends past the bar mitzvah, because then it's the, there's potential for it to not feel like you got your bar mitzvah and now you've kind of graduated synagogue life. But to actually feel like, no, but we're supposed to be here together and I see my parents here. So I guess I'm supposed to still be here.
Very nice. Steve?
We'll be going back and forth for the last few minutes on whether to ask or not, but I will because you just spoke about gender diversity. So over the past year, we've seen a number of people, both here and just out, out there that are identifying as gender non-binary and assuming different names. And it's got to be a struggle. It's probably something that they may have known deeply inside them that they didn't fit into one bucket here or there, there are a myriad. Do you have skills or have you dealt with this population? Or can you recognize if somebody may want to talk about it? Or if they do come to you, would you be able to help them explore?
Absolutely. So part of my, frankly, going back even to college, my, my degree, my undergraduate degrees are in psychology and in feminist studies, which really meant that I was as close to Santa Cruz offered as a gender studies major by merging those two. And, and therefore was spending, and I spent a lot of time in college in the queer and especially in the transgender, queer and transgender side of the LGBTQ plus community. I worked with some friends to make sure that the health insurance on our campus included healthcare coverage for transgender students. They could access hormones or surgery or therapy that they would want. And so I was very involved with them. Some of, I have a close friend who does identify as gender neutral and I understand, or is gender non-binary. And I understand also the instinct to sometimes want to misgender them and misname them, which means I can also offer opportunity, like, help for those of, those who are experiencing someone that they care about on that journey. How the, how to deal with that and how to deal with our own kind of senses of loss sometimes of the person that you thought you knew who's, so that we can also be better allies. Like, I feel like I have the tools both to help a person on that journey with my, with my background and experience and to help those of us who are loving people on those journeys and are not on them ourselves and don't have a full understanding of it because we're not in the same place, but so we can still be loving and partners. Friends, parents, children, cousins, whatever it might, whatever the relationship might be. Absolutely, yeah.
I think we have time for one more question. Does anybody have a question? Okay, I have one more question. How do you see yourself working with Rabbi Vogel?
How do I see myself working with Rabbi Vogel? That's what I've been figuring out. I really love that Rabbi Vogel is someone who's very open to collaboration and to experimentation. I think that he's someone I could feel comfortable going into like cra- crazy idea. Let's try, I don't even know it right now because the crazy idea hasn't, you know, right now isn't popping. But like, feel like I could go in with him and say that and say, how could we, should we try that? Am I not even thinking about trying that? And really, I feel like I could really comfortably work with him. And I, and he's someone that I have looked up to as a rabbi for a very long time. So I think part of working with him is also learning from him, watching him, thinking about how to learn from how he conducts service, how he makes space. So it's simultaneous. I feel comfortable going to him to say, hey, can we try that? And, and learning from him and his years of experience.
Terrific. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you spending time with us.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here and for being on the live stream. Tomorrow, we have another opportunity for a question and answer with Rabbi Greenspan at 11:00 in the morning and that'll be via Zoom. And the link is on our website that you can access when you log on, on to the website and you'll get the Zoom information. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.